Okay, call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting today, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome everyone. Tim Schroeder is not here today from council, but the other four council are present. We'll go on to approval of minutes. Mike sent around the minutes in his report. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. And now we'll go to public input. And this isn't when the county speaks, but this is for the public. Anybody from the public like to speak? Is there anybody on?
No one, no one signed in on Zoom.
Okay, Katie.
I'm just gonna sit here on the corner. First, I just wanna say I'm Katie Herbold. I live at twelve fifty Melrose. I'm a resident and I also own Sidekick Coffee and Books, this dump walk here. Thank you Troy for meeting with me. Is he here?
Well, he was.
A couple of weeks ago, Troy, Nick and I met just to discuss some options for the lost revenue that the city has been receiving since January. It's been about thirty to forty thousand dollars that the city's been bringing in, as I understand it, from the lost revenue sales tax and sales tax increase, which we discussed before that was being brought in by the small businesses and we were in charge of collecting it, reporting it, giving it, and paying it, obviously, like we always do. But this was a one percent increase and the city was behind getting some kind of benefit to the small businesses or doing something to maybe alleviate some, something that they could do in exchange for doing the collection. Since we moved into this space six years ago, my HOA fees for this building, for this space have gone from four hundred and eighty dollars a month to a thousand dollars a month. That's a pretty exponential increase on a tiny little business for a monthly charge. It's not just me. That's our space that we own is commercial, Herbold Commercial, and the law firm is part of it. But it is mostly Sidekick Coffee and Books that owns that space. The city has been receiving all of this revenue and we were, I'm hoping to discuss, get some more things cooking here a little bit faster because it's been going on since January, what we can do for the small businesses. I know that some things are not on the table because of how they're structured, but some ideas are maybe alleviating some of the cost of snow removal or garbage or something along those lines because it does cost me something to do this. I do have to pay credit card fees. I'm not a business who charges that and maybe I just need to start doing that. So I do pay higher credit card fees on this. I'm also not a business that has the operation when I go offsite and do a book fair or I do an event at the same time that Sidekick is open. I have to eat that one percent because Iowa City currently, or Coralville, is charging one percent less than we are. So I, I can't operate like that and I have to pay that sales tax out of my revenue from that event. So it's not a no cost thing to me that's happening. And I'm just hopeful, I'm here tonight. I know it's in Troy's report. Thank you again for including it tonight for to get something going that would be any relief from the businesses. Another thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, because I don't know that you're all aware of it, is that the last HOA meeting for OUP, it was brought to my attention by Kevin Munson, that he never intends to sell these apartments upstairs, which was not the understanding that I came up to as a resident when this building was put in structure. What that means for these businesses is that we will never have control as commercial owners because of the square fee that we hold as commercial units together. We will never have like a say in what happens. We also have no saved revenue as an HOA to go move forward to pay with things that would include like outside fees for the wood that's been falling apart, concrete that's cracking, things like that. There's no savings. Even all these, all these fees have gone up. So I know that a lot of things are done for businesses from Coralville and the city of Iowa City. I've brought up a lot of ideas to past council members, current council members. We're just looking, I think there's five of us that collect sales tax for a little relief from, in exchange for reporting and collecting the sales tax that the city is like reaping a huge benefit from on a monthly basis. I'm always around, you know where to find me, back and forth. So, thank you.
Thanks Katie. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
About that topic, I think, in the right time?
Yeah, you did it. Yes. We all know you're Jerry Ziverman.
Jerry Ziverman, the one who ordered the Magnus Farming Fire Pizza. Please be at our repeat. We've been knowing about life talks that have against him. I would make the same case Katie's making. And what I would like to know is, is there a process amongst the board or within the board that will get us to a discussion amongst board members and mayor about the issues of Katie Ray?
May I respond, man? I, after speaking with Katie, Jerry, I attended a small business forum in Cedar Rapids hosted by their quarter business, whatever it should be. And actually, they had, it was interesting listening to the different communities talk about how they, I don't know, incentivize local businesses. We had all talked about it very briefly before and Katie and Nick and I talked about it more in depth before that meeting. But depending on what council wants to do, I, I went away from that forum thinking there are some things that we could put together that, that I think would not only support the kind of businesses that I believe the community wants, but also incentivize potentially more businesses like that coming in in the future. So I don't know about council, but, but one of the things that the city is doing through me is exploring how we might make that happen.
Okay, but it has to be, it has to be a forum within the council that takes that issue up from that. Is that not correct? And all I'm asking for is what is the process for that to happen? As Katie said, we've been talking about this a long time. And what's the council process? What would the council process be for such a discussion and such a decision?
Well, the council, you mean, the council, I mean, you can have work session, you can, you know, you can propose something and discuss that proposal as an agenda item. The council can proceed in any way that it wants in terms of having a discussion about the sorts of things that Katie and Jerry have brought up, if the council wants to do that. I mean, you know, the only requirements with respect to public meetings and post it in an agenda twenty-four hours in advance and give notice of what you plan to take action on or plan to discuss. So that's really all you have to do. Whether you, in the past, sometimes the councils had work sessions and I, you know, or special meetings or regular meetings, but bottom line, you post twenty-four hour notice and then have a discussion. That's the only legal requirements.
And that's the legal requirement, that's the process.
Yeah.
Is there any appetite for doing that?
Let me interrupt just a minute, Jerry. I apologize. The only, the only caveat or addition that I would add, and I apologize for having a discussion requires only what I said. Notice, agenda, have a meeting. If you want to take action, well, then that action item needs to be specified either on that, on that agenda, or if you don't know what that action item is yet, then it will have to be on a subsequent agenda, a subsequent meeting.
And I guess what I'm interested in is whether or not there's any appetite for such a discussion amongst the council. And if there's not, would you tell me? And if there is, would you tell me?
So I would say, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm open to listening to anything our citizens and small business people say. So why would they not?
So if Troy is exploring some options, I would assume you're going to make a recommendation or report or give us something to discuss in the meeting?
And I would agree with Jerry that, that yes, that is my intent. The, I in the city actually has a stake in this as tenants and the same thing affects us. So I mean, that's, we all need to be cognizant of that too, but it is both a community issue and a personal issue for the city. So yes, I very much think that it's worth exploring and, and whether it's presenting options or even refining those options to, here's what we think is, is a good first product and what does council think? And where do they want tweaks to be made? Or, or let's give this a try. I, part of the direction that would be needed at some point is the amount of funds. But again, that's all, I mean, this is, we can all discuss that and figure out, but the amount of the lost revenue that wants to be dedicated toward this. And, but all of that is, I think really, first of all, we need to come up with a proposal about what are fair incentives? Where, how do we fairly support the businesses that we want to support, that we want to grow in the community? And, and then once that's figured out, what level of support the city is able to provide? And I, Katie is very good, and so is Jerry about contacting me and having discussions on things. Maureen, to some degree, I have talked a little bit, stopped in and talked to Lisa a little bit down at Stella, but for the most part, the conversations have been driven by our conversations and our involvement on the OUP South Business Group.
Thank you.
Eric, can I ask, do you have, like, I mean, Katie mentioned snowplow, do you have ideas that you would like as an incentive?
You know, I'm, I'm never gonna cry poverty, but costs are for us, we import a lot of stuff. Costs are great, great. I mean, even chocolate, which we don't use water, but it is out of sight. So it's, it's garbage, maybe, snowplow, and the things she mentioned might, would be helped. But what is really helped is just the acknowledgement that we played some role in this, that goes beyond renting space or buying space or occupying space. I mean, the members of this community have pulled us in, like, to be a real part of it. We get, well, it's and we hope we support it well. We've tried to keep our prices as low as we can. You go elsewhere in town and see what you're paying and I think ours are high, but they're, anybody else is. So any, any help is helpful, but just the knowledge that we have, the support of the council is very important. And actually, you take these points, yes. And it's important for them.
There are some logistical issues in that this is not purely a commercial property. So it would need to be structured in such a way that, that we weren't subsidizing, for example, residents of OUP with what it was meant to do with support businesses. Again, the discussions have been very, very, very preliminary at this point, but I think that there are ways, I, I think that it is doable and that there are ways to put together a package that, that, again, council may look at it and say, absolutely not, or let's tweak this, or that's good to go. But I, I do think that we can craft, if that's desired, that we can craft a package that's fair and doesn't just support OUP, but supports, again, when Nick and I talk about this being a walkable community, it's not just OUP, it's Stella, it is the courtyard. It's, I mean, it's, it's all the businesses here. So how do you do, whatever we put together should not support one business or one area over another because they're all paying in to the loss, or they're all generating loss tax. I mean, the customers are paying, but they're all generating that. So I think that it's very doable and that I consider preliminary stages. I do not have anything to present to council right now other than to note in my report that it's something that we're exploring.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Thank you.
I mean, I think like a wish list from you guys would be nice. I'm just, I'm sure. I would be really upset if one of you guys told us. So would my kids.
Jerry, I hope you can complete your conversation with Troy. You know what I mean?
Sure.
And then he'll bring it to us too. Okay.
I missed you tonight. I didn't make it over there.
He's very terrific.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council tonight? Okay, okay. Thanks very much. We'll go on to mayor's report. And the first order of business is the county wanted to come tonight, several from the county wanted to come on a yearly visit and talk about what's new, what's going on, whatever they want to talk about. And Scott, our county treasurer, did you want to start? You've set that up and
Of course.
Thank you for coming. It's Ben Lason, Ben Lason.
I'm gonna try this, let's see. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so Scott Ben Lason, former assistant county attorney, county treasurer. Some of you I know from past lives or present lives, I could see you all. I would say that you seem to be the happiest city councilor. That's good to know. And a classy city council.
We've already passed our
There you go.
My goodness.
And a classy city council, your mayor council, I'd be right when I walked in the door. So I appreciate that. So it's really a pleasure to be here. Back in the spring, we decided, some of us elected officials decided that we wanted to be a team with our communities. So we just want to be in our offices and you call us when you need us. We want to go out and see your faces, get to know you, how you guys get to know us, so you feel more comfortable. Should you want to, to contact your office. So please, that's, that's the purpose of this meeting. But also just kind of tell you some of the newer things we have on our offices. So that's kind of the point of this, of this, I guess, tour. We've found it takes, it's gonna take about a year to go through all the cities. Every year, we're trying to figure out the frequency when we started, but with all the cities and their schedules and, you know, which, where do we fit, it's gonna take about a year to do all the rounds. So about this time next year, again, we'd like to come and see you guys again, if you'd have us. We hope to be good guests. So we'll see how, how we do. Treasurer's side, you guys might not know this, could be news to you, but property taxes are due September first. So, you know, I want to get the news out to your fellow University City Hightians, let them know that is going on. But this year, we have a new intriguing feature on our online page. You can actually set up payment plans now. So before you was gonna have that, like, made it on your fridge and remember that, that was on your fridge. You now set up recurring payments through our tax attacks. So spread the word, we've gotten to the twentieth century. Hopefully, we get to the twenty-first year by next year, but we are pushing our partners with our electronic payments system to help get us up to where we should be. That's all I've got for my report. I'll pass it off to the auditor.
Scott, sir. Correct, correct. So those payments, that's payments in advance, that's not payments retro, correct?
Right, yeah. You can set up advanced payments. So you set up what's called a customer account. So if I can set it up, it'll ask you where your preferred payment source would be, like a checking account or credit card. Then you would set up, you know, okay, I want to pay on the fifteenth of September or fifteenth of March. You've done that day, click go and not have to worry about it come March. Take care of itself. And you're getting an electronic receipt too. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Scott. Hi Julie.
Hi.
Welcome, county auditor Julie Persons. Yes, welcome.
Louise is one of my favorite mayors.
Oh yeah, there you go.
When I was there, she taught me quite a bit. Always answering questions, which I appreciate. But now I am your auditor and if you haven't heard, we have an election coming up in November. Very excited. This will be my first countywide election that I get to run. And it's gonna be a city school, which is one of my favorite ones. So we'll get that and get your new council and all that kind of stuff going on. Other than that, real estate runs through my office, so I pay pretty close attention to what's going on with property tax reform bills. We didn't get one this year. We will, like ninety-nine percent sure we're gonna get one next year. So it's just something I want to make sure small towns are aware of. It's gonna change how we do budgeting, depending on what they decide. It could put a lot of restrictions on how we can bring in money into small towns. So pay attention to it when they roll it out in January. Talk to the legislators. They aren't going to be touching TIF from what they have told us, which is great, because I know a lot of the small towns need their TIF money. But just keep your ears open. It's not one of those bills that you probably want to ignore. But we're around to help answer questions whenever you have questions. And I know I will sue the leaves a lot because I run into her quite a bit at different events. But if you see me out now, just say hi. Or feel free to, when you're in my office, tell my team that you want to come in. They'll open the door and shit. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. And last but not least, the county attorney, Rachel.
Welcome, Rachel. I am the Johnson County Attorney and also the eldest daughter of your favorite citizen. But I'm proud to be here. I love University Heights and Scott's right. We really want to have a good relationship with all of our communities. We recognize that Johnson County is not just the mile around the county admin building. And we, we've had a great time getting out to the community. And I will say just, it's humbling to see what all of you do. Thank you for doing this on your free time. It's a hard job and local government is really where it's at right now. We can pay attention to a lot of the noise, but you guys are all making decisions that really affect people who are living right around here every day and it's a hard job. And you know, you don't always make everybody happy and I can relate to that. So just thank you, really thank you for what you do. The county attorney's office, as you know, has quite a broad scope of duties. I've worked with Steve over the years many times. We have forty-one staff now at the county attorney's office. That includes seventeen attorneys, four victim witness coordinators, support staff. We have a community violence outreach person on staff also. So our staff has grown quite a bit over the years since I started there as a law student in two thousand and one. Nick was actually an intern in our seventy-one. So last year, we prosecuted about four thousand cases on the criminal side. So it's a, that is a big job, everything from traffic tickets to homicides. We went through almost all of two thousand and twenty-four. We almost went two years without having a homicide. And then on my birthday last year, we had our first homicide and that was really unfortunate. But it just kind of goes to show, we never know what's coming in the door. And that's a really busy and big part of my job. I work with Chief Akers. Now, as chief, I worked with him when I started as an intern in two thousand and one, when he was a police officer for the city of Iowa City. And we have a great relationship with University Heights in that way and with Troy too before. So we appreciate that. We also represent all of the departments and other elected officials in the county. So we're the attorneys for these guys and the sheriff and the board of supervisors too. And we do interact with a lot of you for that. So we just want to make ourselves available. If you have questions about how the county runs, if you ever want to hear more about kind of the crime statistics that are going on in Johnson County, please let me know. I'd be happy to meet with a few of you, not a quorum, but just to talk to you a little bit more about crime statistics in Johnson County, because we've been tracking those pretty closely over the past couple of years. So thanks for all you do. I promised Brad Conkle, county sheriff, that I would say hello. He, his wife's out of town, so he says he's doing childcare, but I think he's golfing with his youngest child. But he also wants to come back and talk about the jail tomorrow. The city of Iowa City and the board of supervisors are gonna have their first joint meeting about the joint facility. It'll be the first time both whole groups are together to discuss it. And the idea is to try to get something on the ballot for next November in two thousand and twenty-six, because it has to be on the general election ballot. So I'm sure he'll want to come back and talk to you about that. But just thanks for letting us take a few minutes of your time. And thanks for listening to my dad. And I love University Heights. I've spent a lot of time here and thanks for all you do.
Thank you. It's great to hear from the county too, because sometimes we do need to talk to people from the county. I've talked to Julie already this year. I've talked, I haven't talked to Scott, but I've talked to Brad. And so to know the faces and everything, I'm sure the council will feel more comfortable emailing you, phoning you. So thanks for stopping by. And you're invited to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. But anyway, thanks again.
Thank you, Natalie.
Yeah. And so we'll go on to, with the mayor's report, I wanted to report a little bit. I put some notes down so I wouldn't forget people, but I wanted to thank people for the ninetieth anniversary. Steph and I had fun planning it and getting it off and I think it went really well. And okay, my thank you note must be somewhere here. And so I have, you know, first of all, I want to thank the courtyard Marriott for their offering the food, which was the pork sandwiches and the mac and cheese. And also thanks to Tom Sealeak with West Bank for the, his donation from West Bank paid for the cake and decorations and all of that. And also thanks to Mike Ritchie for serving the food and coordinating with the hotel for that. And a real special thanks to the chief. I mean, it wouldn't have been such a good party without you, chief, and your workers, you meaning your officers, because, no, I guess your wife likes to cater and she has tables and chairs and then you have to transport them and ice, you know, all the equipment. That was so kind of you. And you thanked Robin too for that. That was just wonderful. And also wonderful to have the officers, the full-time officers. That was very, very nice. That meant a lot. And then you brought in Troy to help too. It was great, you know. You know, we tried to bring in all the staff and, and Mike Habercamp and Pat Yegi did the historical displays, which was really, really nice. Thanks for that. And then also, I have down here Pat Yegi and, okay. And I also want to thank Lisa Moore, who helped get the flyers together with Daryl Tucker and also keep everything on the website and really updated. That was so nice of you, Lisa. And you also helped that night. And special thanks to Mike Habercamp and the Old Cap String Band. That was perfect music that night and it was a beautiful night. It was like seventy degrees, beautiful. And I hope I didn't forget anybody. It was just really, the only thing I don't have, if you can believe it, I didn't take any pictures. Did anybody take any pictures? I mean, I can't even believe it. I mean, you know, the cake, the, I was like, okay. Did you take pictures, Mike?
I don't know, I was playing. I don't believe anybody did. I thought about that.
I know. I was just kind of like, duh. And yeah, you didn't take any either. I know, can you believe it? But anyway, it was wonderful. And
There you go.
And
The cameras.
Surveillance camera.
Oh, surveillance cam, oh yeah. Anyway, we'll just keep it in our minds and, you know, it was a wonderful ninetieth anniversary. Thanks everyone for all your help. Now I wanted to quickly go to talking a little bit about financing Melrose and financing the trail project. And financing Melrose, there's been various meetings with Ryan and Troy and Stephen Cool and me and getting all the paperwork together about bonding. And I had told the council, we're gonna do bonding. And so it looks like the first bonding will be about one point five million to cover all the costs. And so in talking to Maggie Berger, who's from Spear Financial, everyone pretty much knows Maggie, she said that we should, at the October meeting, we should set a public hearing or November meeting to start that process. So we'll be getting ahold of you, Steve, to figure that all out and do it the correct way. Then bonding can begin in like January or early February, but we need to get the public hearing first so that we don't miss any of the fees that we might need to cover. And so she sees that. And is that what you understand too, Ryan?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, just, and correct me if I'm wrong. So then, the first round, of course, we can't start the project until the following spring because we need to do the easements, the Mid-American Energy, all those things, you know, electric Mid-American Energy, all those things, you know, electrical, what am I missing?
Yeah, so this, this bond is for like easement acquisitions, utility costs, engineering design fees and all the coordination for utilities, right away acquisitions and things like that. It also includes some cost for other capital improvement projects.
Other street projects.
Street projects that we are anticipating, starting either next summer or the following summer. So we looked at what was within sort of the two-year timeline to be able to spend those funds for, once the bonds process is complete. So that's, I, I don't have the paper on it, but I think that covers pretty well. Everything that was included in that one point five and it does not include the construction cost for Melrose Complete Streets Project. That would be the second bond that Mayor Fox referencing. So which would come at a later date when we're closer to the.
Yeah. Exactly. Second bonding would be about two, two million, two plus million. We don't have that number. But if we'd have some money left from this one point five, we could push it to the second bonding. Like if we had a hundred thousand left, couple hundred thousand left, we could, you know, that'll lower the bond. And that bond would be fall of twenty twenty-six, fall to late December, winter, early winter, somewhere in there. And then bidding would be around in there too for the Melrose Street Project.
Right.
And so I just wanted you to get an idea of what we've been working on. And then you know, I know that Nick Herbold and Tim Schroder have been really trying to figure out financing for the trail project. And we've been all talking with MPO with, you know, every finance area we can. Well, I, I looked into some things and I spoke to Maggie Berger about this. And I want to recommend to the council that we think about or use the urban renewal law. And you know, that's the same as the TIF to be, but there's no dollars to be collected. And with that process, Maggie said, you know, we have no vertical infrastructure, so there's no dollars collected. It's all at the ground level. But if we choose to go down this path, the council wants to look at going down this path. One thing we need to do is talk to the city of Iowa City. And because they have land that some of these paths would be on. And Maggie says they're very familiar with using this urban renewal, this law. And so with that, we could borrow the, we could bond for the whole thing with that if we get approval. So I was thinking we go down that road with, first you have to go through John Danos and Bond Council and he kind of says, unless this can work. And he, he kind of, you draw it up for him and he says, okay, then we go to the city of Iowa City. And I was thinking like Troy and Steve Cool, myself and Maggie, go to this and go, and we start with usually Jeff Fruin, their city administrator and Nicole, their finance director. And we go there and say, this is what we're thinking. This is our project. Would you be interested in doing this urban renewal plan? And they've done it a lot. And so she says, we'll see what they say. Then we, if, if that goes through, we can then keep on going with this plan. And then we have to do like a public hearing, a simple public hearing and move forward with it. And then we could bond and either if we could really get it done by the end of December, we could bond with the January, February time, which might be really hard to get that all together. But we can bond with the second time. And then that way you save the twenty-five, thirty thousand that we, every time we bond, it's, you know, the price of it. So I was thinking to recommend to council, let's go down this road and see if Iowa City goes with it. And if you want, instead, we could have either a, a work session or a special meeting and bring in Maggie Berger and she could explain it even more. But I thought, let's just go down this road a little bit and see if we can't work it this way. We also were, I know Josh, Nick, I think you said Josh is working on a, to, to get money. What do you call it? You know,
Grant funding.
Grant, you know, money. That way, well, we can still work with that. And there are people who might want to make donations. Then we can borrow less. When I talked to Steve Cool about it, he said, we could earmark local option sales tax for this project. And I said, Maggie, what do you think? She, when I've seen other cities do this and they do trails, she said, they'll put up a sign that says, your penny is paying for these trails. And I thought, wouldn't that be cool? You know, and I mean, you know, to really have it earmarked on some project that people are ninety percent for, maybe. A lot of them are for this. There's a few that don't like some of the features of it. But if we go down that route, I just think this would be awesome. And then you know that local option sales tax is also being voted on with other cities in Johnson County. And that's only gonna, you know, with Iowa, have you seen that on the news? Iowa City, you know, Corville. Anyway, that's going to be, right, Steve? Do you know about that? Can you say something about what? I mean, I didn't prepare on local option sales tax, but.
Yeah, I didn't really either, but that's my understanding more just from reading the news, but.
Because I know you read all that.
Yeah, the city of Iowa City and, and, and Corville will have the local option sales tax. It's already been adopted by University Heights, Tiffin, Longtree, Solon.
Swisher.
Swisher.
Shuiville. I think that's it. Six. Longtree, yes.
I think North Liberty is on the list. I think North Liberty.
Yeah, I think you're right.
No, no, Tiffin. No, not North Liberty.
Are they not a few?
No.
Okay.
Not North Liberty.
And I don't know, is it on, are they on this fall?
I didn't see their name, but I don't know. I don't read everything.
The two big dogs, Iowa City, Corville, it will be on, on ballot, on their ballots this, this fall in November.
Yeah. And you know, a bigger pool helps us too. But anyway, that's something to look into too. That's going to be on the ballot. But anyway, I was just presenting this to the council that maybe we should look into this and go to the next step of this urban renewal plan. And we, we could borrow all of it. And then it could happen within the first year or the second year. It could go on at the same time as we're building Melrose. You know, it could. I talked to Ryan about it. Ryan said, yeah, that could happen. You know, I mean, I mean, it's in a different area. And it's land, so I don't know.
Mayor, I just confirmed on North Liberty's website, they have this vote.
They've got a poll.
Who does?
North Liberty will be.
So Iowa City.
And North Liberty. For some rea, yeah, but I know they're not on now. Because I meet with those mayors and I know, and I met with them before we did ours and they said, we have no intention of doing it. And then bam. And I even caught, talked to some of their financial people and city administrators. And at that time, they weren't thinking about it. But thank you for looking that up. Because usually those big three go together. So I don't know. What do you think about the idea of doing that? What do you think, Nick?
Yeah, I mean, it seems pretty popular in towns. So I think keeping it moving is good. I think it's good not to reinvent the wheel on it too. Because I know the others, you know, Corville, Iowa City have done this over and over. Yeah. In terms of whether to use lost or hotel motel tax, I guess the question would just be,
Yeah, that is.
Whichever one's more flexible, you know, to, you'd want to probably use the one that has fewer other uses that it can be used for, I guess would be my assumption. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, I don't know if it'd be a work session. I was just pointing out my calendar or what would be a good way to move it along.
Well, we could just move it along. Have Troy and me and Steve Cool meet with Iowa City and see what they think. And we could report back and hopefully we could meet with them in the next month. I mean, you never know about people's schedule, but it's their staff. And could we, would you be okay with that? Or do you want to? And then Maggie could come and work through if we get a go-ahead that we could do that. And also with fundraising, Maggie said, people, before they want to give to the campaign, they want to make sure it's like on the books, which makes sense, you know, that you're going to proceed with it. You have a time schedule. You're planning on it. And then, because I've talked to a few people that I have no idea what they want to give, but you know, that would be interested in having this trails project. And so I just, I just would like to get an okay from council that we can move forward and meet with the city of Iowa City to see, since it's on, a lot of it's on their land. And then of course, at the same time, we're working with the University of Iowa on getting their okay. And I think that's, when you responded, isn't that, aren't they still getting it on September's agenda?
I don't know. I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
If it's like preliminarily on their agenda. David Keft emailed me today, said he was out this week, but he'd get back at the next week. So I think it's really on their true agenda in November.
I do too. I heard November, did you hear that too? But then I thought when you responded, he moved it up.
But then they also have a, they have a huge lead time, you know, to get something on their agenda.
Right.
So, so.
Yeah. Time he said it's too late. You know, we're going to move it to November. And I, and that's what his email pretty much said.
I, the way I understood his email was that something's happening in September, but I think it's, I think that preliminary review is to get it on the November agenda. Yeah, I'll clear it right now when I talk with you.
I don't need to be involved. I would just say keep Nick Pfeiffer involved with Think Iowa City because not during the meetings, but just because he's kind of the person I was shoving all my grant knowledge to.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Yeah. Nick Pfeiffer. Okay. And so anyway, I'm just really excited about this, that possibly we can do it this way and get the money and we can figure out how to, what, how to pay for the bond with hotel motel lost, whatever, as we go down the road. And so does anybody else have any comments from council? You, you're free to move forward too. I think Doug's shaking his head and Lisa, okay. Do I need anything more than that? Okay. I don't think so. But anyway, yeah, I know everybody's pretty excited about this and we, hopefully we'll see if we can work this way. There's other ways, but they, you know, like we did with the Swisher track where you go bond and you got to put it on the ballot. Well, that couldn't be until next November. We don't want to wait that out. We want, we want to get it going. That's how I feel like the council has voted towards and how they want it to go. So, okay, so we'll go on. I don't have anything else. So we'll go to Steve's legal report. Which is the same as every month.
It has been lately. Consideration of ordinance two fifty-seven, which, which adjusts the zoning ordinance with regard to a portion of the Melrose Avenue Complete Streets Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote.
Gone.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder's absent. Swales.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That's final approval.
One absent.
With one absent.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So anything else, Steve? Any questions for Steve? We'll go to city administrator, Troy.
My report speaks for itself. I would, I know the mayor went through her thank yous and acknowledgements for the ninetieth anniversary reception. There were too many for me to list. Again, I shout out to the police department. Every one of them was there. Courtenored by Marriott and Mike Ritchie, but this would not have happened without the mayor. This was the mayor's, this was the mayor's baby all the way. Even once it was talked about, then it was kind of.
Will Steph help me?
Oh, there are lots of people. No, I know you, you tapped Steph early. I know that. But this was, this was your idea and it came to fruition because of you and it was a work of love from your side. And anyway, you, you deserve ninety-five percent of the credit for making it happen. You had lots and lots of people to lean on who were willing.
I missed your report. How nice of you. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's, that's the only thing that I want to highlight. And other than that, dealing with some nuisance properties and other issues today, but I don't really have anything to report beyond that.
Okay, made it through football. Okay. Very good. Any questions for not chief, city administrator? Troy? Okay. We'll keep going here to city clerk and you sent around a report.
I don't have anything else to add other than since I sent my report, I think I picked up ten more rental renewals. From the folks that I put up, a reminder at the end of August. So we're really close to being just about done.
That's great, Mike. I know that's a lot of work. I appreciate it. Okay. We'll go to city treasurer's report. John.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I only have two items. One, one to think to add to this once, which Ryan will speak to later. It's LL Pelling, Kosher Avenue Patching Project. It's seven thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars, eighty-one cents. But Ryan will speak to that more later. Same thing as, you know, I've been doing this for a few years now, but something's become new. All right. I had about a ninety-minute IPRIS comprehensive review session with the state this morning. And the city did very great. The IPRIS review, there was one little, little tiny caveat that's something new regarding elected staff that I will, I will share. I'll generate reports sent out, but I haven't had a chance to to share that with people, people today. But that does something new that happened today. So the city is compliant with IPRIS. There's just one little, we want something to be to to take care of. So.
Okay. Well, you had the warrants?
Yes. I have the warrants. There's one item to add to the blessing warrants.
Okay, so you sent around the warrants and then you have one item to add?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's that?
LL Pelling, Oh, Kosher Avenue Repair. And amount is seven thousand one billion glasses.
Four hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
So the estimate was forty-five hundred and they're five of less.
What's that?
Seven, four, nine, five?
Uh, no, it's like right on the estimate. Yeah, they just.
Okay.
Exactly.
Seven, four, nine, five, four, yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, so the warrants are before the council. Are there any other additions to the warrants? Is there any objection to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills would be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you. And let's see, we have an agenda item under you to approve city treasurer's recommendation.
CDs, yes. So we had a CD at a local credit union that all of renewed at half a percent.
Yeah, half a percent.
So I took the liberty and well, it was tied, it was piggybacked to a savings account that we had to close because due to inactivity. Or we'd have to go to the great treasure hunt to get our money.
Yeah.
I was there to close that account and it was like, oh yeah, we had this CD that renewed a half percent. So I took it upon myself to just go ahead, kill the CD. Mike's got the two checks. So we have the options to, it's fifty-three thousand with which to reinvest in the different financial institution. We went through this last civil council meeting and none of the rates have changed. Green State is taking firm with their four percent. Well, the deposit date of tomorrow, which I think is considering what might come down the pipe with the next Federal Reserve meeting. Federal Reserve meeting is, I think we should take it, my, my recommendation is we. Take advantage of the Green State rate of four percent because everybody else is running around three and a quarter. So, I got uh. I got polls here. I don't want to mention Hills Bank, that's embarrassing.
So the total is like seventy-one? What is the total? That we have to.
Put in, it's fifty.
This meeting.
It's fifty-three plus seventeen hundred, so it's basically fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five thousand, sorry.
Okay. So you recommend Green State?
At four percent.
I do, uh, but, but the thing is about Green State is the last city council meeting where we're looking at shorter term. Uh, like six months, nine months, and I'm just watching the financial news. Green State is offering uh twelve months at four percent and eighteen months at three point nine five. So just fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand is probably not a. Bad bet to go with three point nine five at eighteen.
The eighteen month one?
Yeah, because uh from my reading is Federal Reserve has. Done a minimum cut twenty-five basis points the next meeting, if not fifty. So the rates are gonna, gonna drop, so I've. Yeah, I say it's not, it's fifty thousand, it's not bad to lock in for an eighteen month deal.
Okay, so you recommend putting it in the eighteen month at three point nine five? Any discussion from council?
Sounds good. We don't need it before then. Sounds good to, to the eighteen months.
No, not a Scott concert, you know.
Do we wanna, you have a simple.
I was tempted to find out.
You want a simple motion?
Yeah, simple motion. Yeah. Motion by Nick and is there a second? Second by Lisa, she raised her hand first. I'm sorry, I looked at you second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, four.
Four, zero, one.
Yeah, one absent. Okay, very good. Thank you for catching all that. So it didn't renew at a half percent.
Right.
And any questions for John? Okay, we'll go on to. Uh, Nick?
Nothing.
You have anything this month?
Nope.
Okay. You win the award. Okay, then we'll go to police chief report. Chief?
Um, I really have nothing to, not much to add to the report. Uh, the first football game went. Relatively smoothly. Not a lot of problems throughout the city that I'm aware of. Um, dealing with a few places with the portable toilets that aren't being covered up well enough, but that's being addressed. Questions?
Thanks for everything. I appreciate you attending farmer's market. You're very popular there. Thank you for that. And uh no questions, we'll, we'll go on to Steph. Steph, do you have anything?
I don't have any.
Okay, we'll go on then to. Uh, cause actually some of that information is with Ryan Foley in his report. Hi, Ryan.
Hi. How are we doing? Um, so. On my report, I guess I'll just touch on a few things and then um the big one, the big ticket one uh tonight is the RRFBs at uh Sunset and Oak Crest. But um, so they're on Melrose Avenue. Uh Complete Streets Project, we're continuing to coordinate with uh utility companies. I met with MetroNet this morning. I have a meeting with MediaCom tomorrow and I've been trying to get Mid-Am pinned down this week for another meeting. Uh to review their um, their scope and get their designs um started, so I can start placing. Handholds and facilities on our sheets to show those. So uh we've also been coordinating with. With Paul Moore on um his electrical services and our electrical engineer has got me, um, we got some. Information from Mid-American finally on usage at the commercial buildings and some recommendations from the electrical engineer. I don't have those recommendations included in my report, but um we're working with Paul on, on getting those uh. Sort of that design pinned in on kinda how we're gonna do that. And um I need to meet with Paul and uh Mid-American onsite again. Um, the Highland Drive and Ridgeview Avenue improvements, um constructions getting close to wrapped up. I've gotta finish up a punch list. Send that to the contractor. SOD was installed the early in the week leading up to the first football game. I uh went out there the week after, surprisingly. I, I think no one damaged it except for maybe one property and it wasn't too bad. So I'm very happy with that. Uh, the slot's looking good um today, so. We should be wrapping that one up here pretty soon. Um. Payment markings, we did have an invoice for uh retainage, releasing retainage for the payment marking work from LL Pelling. So that was included in the uh, the warrants list tonight. Uh and then I, John had received the invoice from Pelling on the asphalt curb patching on Kosher Avenue. And so I didn't have anything noted on that in my report, but. I did tell him that we, I was comfortable with approving that tonight because that work was done per plan and I had measured it all out with the uh. With the contractor before they started. So, you know, and we'd, I had reviewed because they did that work. The same day as all the Highland work um as far as their milling and, and installation and placement, so. Um, so that cost was just under seventy-five hundred dollars like we talked about earlier with the warrants list. And then um. Sidewalk inspection program letters are now, I've been receiving lots of phone calls and emails, uh most of them very good and easy positive of we'd like to join the city's project. So um. So far, so good. I've got a couple of properties to re-inspect and then respond, respond to those requests, so. And then um, the last item I have on my report is um RRFBs at Sunset and Oak Crest. So um. Councilmember gone and uh Chief Akers. Uh loop me in on sort of some stuff that they've been reviewing uh right with RRFBs at Sunset uh with the crossing guard retiring. Um, the, the desire was to find some way to. Um, sort of make the crossing more conspicuous, I guess is how I'd describe it. Um. So the, the MPO uh Mayor Fromm and, and Councilmember gone had engaged MPO last summer. They did a study. And I've included that in my report, just so everybody has it uh available. But they did a study to essentially uh review whether uh an in-street yield to pedestrian was warranted um and then or to review the RRFB installation. So. Ultimately, their study concluded that it would be warranted to install either of those devices, um although they sort of cautioned that, that, that those can't, shouldn't be done lightly. Essentially, uh that you should weigh the pros and cons of both, um cause just cause it's warranted doesn't mean you, you need or have to do that, uh install them. So. Um, the, the yield, the in-street uh state law yield to pedestrian and crosswalk. Um, I met with MPO, their main comment was these are expensive and they uh, they are damaged a lot. And so. Um, my additional comment to that is that we don't have a um, a maintenance staff that's kinda on hand twenty-four seven to handle. Picking up the pieces and reinstalling those signs uh a, a lot. So um. I would tend to not recommend using those signs uh that are in the street, especially if you don't have a refuge island. If there's a refuge island there, that might be a different scenario, but um. So then the RRFBs were something that um were being investigated as far as uh adding, right, to the um existing crosswalk signs. So you can add those at an existing um. Uh uncontrolled uh crosswalk uh to sort of uh. Accentuate the signs that are already there, right? Um so those are installed with flashing uh rectangular flashing lights. On each side of the road. So instead of having one sign on the, your right-hand side, you would have a sign on both sides of the street. Each of those signs would have flashing lights below it and then you'd have a push button that's would be activated by pedestrians that want to cross the street there. So. Uh, that's the general setup, both directions. Um, they would be across the street from each other. On the same crosswalk, so likely we would recommend the south side of the street if these were to be installed. Um, and they, they, they've been shown by FHWA that they do work, I guess, to uh. Reduce collisions and to um increase uh yielding by vehicles uh to pedestrians. Um, I think the important thing to note is that, that, that no signage can replace a, a, a person that's stopping people um for people to cross the street. So. Um, it's important to understand that. And also, um, so pretty good in, you know, input I got from MPO with, after my meeting with them is that. You know, education is pretty key with young children that are gonna be using this because this isn't, it's not a signal. It does, it doesn't require vehicles to just stop. So they still have to push the button and wait for a gap in traffic or a, a car that's yielding. So um, you know, MPO mentioned that they can work on. Providing um educational. Packages and things and, and information to the, to the school to help assist with that and to parents and things, but that's. Something I think that they would strongly want the city to consider um when installing these. And um. I spoke with North Liberty uh who has one and installing and an additional location of these, these types of devices and Iowa City has one installation in, in their city. Um, Iowa City currently doesn't install anymore. Uh and North Liberty also commented that, you know, you'll get a lot of requests for these, but you, you know, you should re- really restrain in how, where you're installing them. And that's. Consistent with FHWA's advice, which is that they become less um. Uh. Less productive, the more locations they're used, I guess, in, in creating yielding conditions from vehicles. So.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
I also spoke with uh Emily Boffel and Sarah uh over at MPO as recently as this morning. And kinda talked about uh their survey and I think the numbers are in here as far as the number of people they saw crossing, which I was surprised that there were that many. Uh anecdotally, when we had a crossing guard there, I personally witnessed. Some of the elementary school age children crossing at locations other than that intersection. To, so that they could cross when they wanted rather than. Being held up by Harold. Uh while this is not the intersection, not even close to the intersection that we have the most pedestrians crossing. Uh, we do have the greatest concern at this location for elementary school age children crossing as opposed to. You know, Kosher and, and Melrose where there's some multiple of this as far as people crossing, but they're adults, they're college age. And above, where they can do so, they're, they're better at assessing it. Uh as. Ryan said, there is an education aspect to it. I don't envision that the signs go up and we walk away from it completely. Uh the police department's been very good about staffing that position. While we don't have a crossing guard and. And it would not take, in my opinion, very many days for the kids to learn that if they push it, the lights come on. And unlike, unlike an intersection, even for the adults using it, unlike. Uh truck, an intersection with traffic control lights such as Benton and Sunset where you push the button. And you do have to wait for the lights to cycle. You do have to wait for the green light to turn red or the red light to turn green and a walk sign come on. And people are looking and saying, you know what, there's nobody coming, so I'm gonna start across the intersection. And they're totally unaware that. That car that was waiting to turn right on red also sees that nobody's coming, is now turning across the crosswalk. These signs, the flashing light goes on immediately and. Uh both statistically and looking at the numbers and just anecdotally from, from my. Having used these signs and when I'm bicycling, I, I think they're very effective and they catch, they catch motorists' attention. Uh I. I, I think they are a solution. They are, they are. Twenty-five thousand dollars is what we're going to guess to do an installation on it. Uh that sounds like a lot. But if it prevents a kid from getting hit there, I, I think it's a worthwhile investment.
Do they still have a crossing guard on Sunset? Or I'm sorry, Benton Street on the south side of Horn School? They're right on the Escoban Curve there. There's always a uh. Crossing guard there. Is that person still doing that?
Yes.
If they're there two days ago. Yeah, no, no, they, they, they do. And let me, let me, let me say this as a uh, not as a treasurer, but somebody who. Lives at the bottom of uh. Of Oak Crest and Crest up that hill a lot.
Yeah.
I, I think this is a great plan, you know, for crossing uh Sunset. But because I live there, so when I, when I hit that crest, I mean, I slow down because you can't really see. It isn't just necessarily pedestrians, it's cyclists sometimes, you know, I don't, I don't need, I don't need another hood or anything. So for me, I'm conditioned that when I, when I hit that crack and I get up to that crest. I just like, I just nose because you can't, first you gotta check the sidewalk and then you can nose forward and then check the traffic. But that's me as a resident that's lived here for a long time. My concern is, you know, for the kids who are crossing, who are crossing Oak Crest. And you have these people, you know. I mean, outside my house this morning, we had, we had. We had some drama with a, a mom and a bus driver, but anyway, we have people who don't live in this area, not comfortable with driving that. So, and I think you brought this up before, that I, I think this, this is a great plan for crossing uh. The Sunset, but I am worried about that crossing Oak Crest. That's uh, I just, I just will put that out there because.
And we have talked about it and I am, I mean, that is always a concern and it's the turning traffic off of Sunset, not necessarily the traffic coming up Oak Crest. Uh. Right now, we don't have that position staffed at all except by the police. And while they have been very good about doing it. Other emergency calls. Like I can't necessarily dedicate to them. We did talk about different options. None of the other places in town, uh North Liberty is a good example, Penn Street. Uh. They only have it on Penn Street. They don't have it on the controlled street, the street aside. Now, at school crossing or school. School times, morning and afternoon, they do have a crossing guard there, but the light is still used by, by. Everybody, adults to kids coming and going from their normal routine. And for us, for example, I mean, you know, you look down there, the playground on Honor's Horn isn't just occupied. Or the horn isn't just occupied during the school time. I mean, people, I don't know. This is not, this is not a perfect solution, but we think it's a, a best practice or a good practice solution.
Yeah, I, I mean, so the manual on uniform traffic control devices doesn't, doesn't like allow us to install pedestrian crosswalk signs when there's a stop control intersection. So. There's a stop sign, that's, that's the control. So we can't put other signs behind a stop sign because you can't change the outline of that. It's a very uh. Uh, universal, you know, shape and color. And so um. I mean, unfortunately, it's sort of like you, you need to expect a driver to do what they're supposed to do also. So.
I.
That's kinda what, where you're at the mercy if, if you, if you take away that person that's the crosswalk guard, like I don't know if you will see. An increase um in issues. Um, the report from MPO says there's not been any pedestrian uh. Uh thankfully, no pedestrian uh accidents at the intersection and only four accidents in the last ten years, um vehicular accidents, I think, is what the report says. So um. But by their account, that's a very small number right now. So.
And in reviewing the data and reviewing the concern and actually exploring other options. Uh. Also briefly considered, you can get traffic control sign, stop signs, for example, that the, the white border around the side. Lights, you know, you can also be set up and solar salt flashes. But the issue in my mind anyway. For, for kids, for pedestrians crossing Oak Crest, isn't the traffic on Oak Crest, it's the turning traffic. From Sunset onto Oak Crest, which these signs, I believe, will. Address and slow. The flashing light will come on and people will, at least in my experience, very quickly learn. This isn't something that'll be specific to University Heights. It's, it's all over the place. Now, if you, you know, are from. Cosgrove, maybe you've never seen one in your city before, but they're all over the place. And, and all of a sudden, it's not just, there's this. Flashing light as you're driving down the street, all of a sudden there's strobing yellow lights and, and there's a sign that says. Yield to pedestrians. And I, I think they're very effective. And the concern again is. Traffic from Sunset going onto Oak Crest, which this should work for, I, I hope will work for those that.
Not to convolute the conversation anymore, but I know on the, again, Benton Street, when the school's on. He slows his speeds down, it's flashing down to twenty. Have we ever entertained that there on Sunset? That thought of slowing traffic down to twenty and just during school hours?
I don't know.
Cause there's people that drive down Sunset like they're fat out of hell.
We're a thousand feet from the school. I don't know how, how far those, I'd have to do some research, but in my knowledge, it isn't something that we've ever. We're a thousand feet from the school, I don't know how, how far those, I'd have to do some research, but in my knowledge, it isn't something that we've ever considered. I, I don't know what traffic standards are for being that far away.
Crackdown on that Sunset there, that's a, like, we tracked them, and now, from them apartments.
Yeah, and I think Benton's higher speed, right, uh, to begin with.
Yeah, Benton's thirty-five.
That's thirty-five.
Five, and we're twenty-five, so you're not going to gain the same kind of probably compliance, uh, but also the same difference in speed is not gonna be the same, even if you try to sign it at twenty, or supposed to be twenty-five to begin with, so.
I know.
Benton's twenty-five, isn't it?
That's what he said.
Oh, Benton, Benton, you mean?
Uh, Benton is yeah.
And, but it's twenty, twenty schools on
Right.
Okay, I thought it was higher speed, so um yeah, I guess we could me, we could, I could look into that. I mean, uh, Sunset, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Should be three blocks away.
Could review it, uh, if you'd wanna do that as well, but
Well, I didn't mean to mix it up any worse, but.
Is the goal that the lights would replace uh, actual crossguard as well?
Correct, right now, we do not have a crossing guard there.
Has there been any effort to?
Yes.
Okay, I assume so, but I just
I think trying to, that's
Like, can't like, Oak Hill, like, aren't there people at Oak Hill that would just follow through their time to go do the thing they want to, right?
Stephanie has talked about doing it, when she
I think it's a good idea, I think there's quite a, a range in prices, and I wonder if part of that is, I know it's installation cost, but also features, I think it'd be nice if you could control how long the lights flash afterward, I don't know if there might be some
I think that is a feature.
Yeah, with like, younger kids versus, you know, like, how long it flashes after they start across.
I believe that is a feature, they're used on everything from, from two-lane roads to well, to, yeah, two lanes going both directions with, with divided median, so uh, timing has to be featured, there's also different feature sets as far as how many strobing lights you have, where they strobe, do they strobe around the light, uh, the poles that come with it, and you're, you're just getting the signs and having to cobble it together. Uh, I am a proponent of, I mean, we're, you know, we're the city of University Heights, but we are one cog in a, in a larger metropolitan area, and I, I very much believe there needs to be or there should be to the extent possible, consistency of everything from signage to traffic laws, so that it isn't I'm driving through University Heights, and I'm seeing something that I haven't seen before, and what's that mean? Uh, so that's one of the things that is driving, uh, Chief Acres and Stephanie, uh, came up with a if we pared everything down, we can possibly get a sign for, I think, as little as between five and six thousand dollars. But that didn't include then, everything else necessary, and it was, it, it was just something different. And by the time we, when Ryan and I talked through it, and you included everything else, prices would be comparable. But yes, I do think time to this programmable.
Yeah, the duration of the flashing would be based off, I mean, if you'd usually do that based off a certain walking speed and the distance, sounds good. But yeah, uh, you're, I think you're talking about in the MPO's report, there's a lo- large range, like forty-five hundred to fifty-two thousand. Um, I, I guess so, we, you know, their average cost, uh, maybe around the twenty-two, two-fifty, still seems kind of high based off um, I guess in Shive Hattery, we do work in North Liberty, and they're, they're installing some of these right now, this summer, for uh North Liberty Road Trail Project, that's up by Liberty High School, um, and uh they have three of them, and the total cost, I think, was around twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand, and they had twelve bidders, and they were all within that, a two-thousand range between those two numbers, and so, for that lump sum package, and that's for three signs on each side of the road, and one in the center uh, median refuge island. So we're gonna estimate high, potentially with twenty-five thousand, hopefully, but I'm also figuring some restoration and potential concrete costs for sidewalks, if we need to remove and replace any sidewalks or anything, but right now, we're planning on doing solar installation, because based off my uh, discussions with North Liberty, and I think Troy's discussions with North Liberty and M, and MPO for Iowa City, uh, you know, they haven't seen any issues with using solar uh, installations to run the power, so um, that was one of my, my bigger concerns, particularly with this intersection, there's a large pine tree on the southeast corner. Um, and so, um, I was a little concerned about that, but MPO uh, was gonna send notice to the, that, that owner to limb up that tree, cause it's overhanging the sidewalk, uh, much lower than requirements, and um, so that should help with there a little bit, and then I think um, you know, streets north-south, so hopefully we'll get enough southern exposure to keep that system powered up, so um, so I, I do feel more comfortable with the battery-powered installation than I, I originally started. After speaking with some users that have been using that, North Liberty's had theirs for, I think, ten, you know, over ten years, so but yeah, I think ultimately, what uh, we're looking to do is um if everybody from council's comfortable, I know, I know that Councilmember gone's uh, spoken on this item uh, several times, but um, if we want to move forward, I would plan to start putting together like a, a couple plan sheets that we could actually get a bid out and get the work um, started to install.
So Steve, should we do a a motion?
Well, when, so you're, you're talking about getting a bid out, uh, and then
I mean, I'm just saying, right, just, I kinda want direction from council for me to actually have somebody start putting together a plan set. And, and, I mean, it, it wouldn't be issued for bid within the next month, it'd just be like
Okay, right.
Like, start working on the drawings.
Yeah, okay, so A consensus is fine, okay. I see a nod, and Lisa, do I see a nod from you? Okay. Thank you, we have consensus from council
Okay.
To move forward next step.
Yeah.
Thanks, and thanks for everybody, I know Stephanie did a lot of work on it, the chief did a lot of work on it, Troy did a lot of work on it, Ryan did a lot of work on it to make sure we keep these kids safe, and it's so good to, you could look at other cities to see what works and what didn't work. You did a lot of homework, appreciated all that. So is there
That's pretty much all I had on my report, we, I had a couple of things come in, uh, leading up to the first home game, which was uh, some streetlights were out, and then um a handhole near, you know, heavy tailgating areas was uh, the lid was broken, so I got the um, the telecom owners out there to make a replacement to that, but you know, it's football season, so.
Did he ever fix that flickering light down at the bottom of uh, Oak Crest?
I think, I think Mayor Fromm, I, I also emailed him.
I contacted I really haven't been around.
I think I'm gonna hit start tonight
Oh, we'll check.
We leave, so I'm gonna make a drive, and make sure they all that.
There was a flickering streetlight.
Yeah, on, on Oak Crest, yeah. Ryan will do a comprehensive survey. Troy sent me like, the week of the first game, like, hey, it's a night game, did you know that? We need to get these lights fixed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Doug, you didn't have anything else, did you? Thank you. And so Tim didn't send a report, he's okay this month, and then we'll go to E-Government, and you sent around a report, and it's up on the screen.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ryan for all his help with the website, he took in quite a bit of writing suggestions.
I got some requests for making T-shirts out of our new logo.
Sending logo or the ninetieth one?
University, I screw one.
Uh, you know, when I was reading Lisa's report yesterday, and I had sent an email, and I'm sorry, Lisa, I didn't get back to you because just had some family things going on, and uh I talked with Kyle from Quality Care, who does the leaf vacuuming, because it would be nice to have leaf vacuuming day before October meeting, so he said this. I would propose we shoot for round one, starting Monday, October thirteenth, then round two, starting November seventeenth. And adjust if necessary, depending on the leaf drop rate, cause last year we, you know, it was a really late fall, and so it was just, the leaves were on forever. And the first date was October twenty-eighth, and the second one was November eighteenth. So we kinda went to more normal schedule, so I think we oughta put in Monday, October thirteenth is the first one, and round two, November seventeenth, and we'll and we'll see if we need to adjust it. Does that all sound okay? I usually do this before the meeting, but I didn't get it done.
Sounds good.
Does it sound good with council?
And if it changes, if you're signed up on Friday, you get a handy email.
So, yeah. Well, you're doing everything you can to get them to sign up, so I've been on every handout, every mailing. Okay, so any other questions for Lisa? Okay, announcements, any announcements? And uh, any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent, thanks everyone, and thanks Scott for hanging out.